Moment here. And you are all set. Have a good meeting.
All right, I would like to call the January ninth, twenty twenty-three school committee meeting to order. At six oh one. And let me start here. The Situate School Committee is committed to providing an environment of respect during meetings. We ask all members to interact in a polite manner, even when there is disagreement. We value the participation of our community and want all participants, including marginalized and minority communities to feel well respected. We ask our committee members and all who participate to commit to these standards to support and respect our community. Uh, as always, the pub- will public comment will be available through Zoom and community members can also email me at nbrandelini@sit.org with any questions. That being said, we will begin with public comments. Seeing no in-person participants, we will double check on our virtual. Folks. Not seeing any. Hands raised. All right. Okay. Let's go to our next item, which is our student representatives and their report. Ms. Redell and Mr. Bunker.
Hello.
Hi.
Welcome back.
Thank you. I do for a time apologize. I never sent this to you. Um, I can send it now, but I suppose you'll hear it.
And just so you guys know before, I know that Victor wasn't here because he was away, but he was watching on the Facebook Live. So he's a very committed student representative.
It was late, so.
I was gonna say, that's extremely negative.
Very good. Alright. Last week, three AP Gov students, myself included, attended Governor Mara Healy's inauguration party at TD Garden. We studied the intricacies of the political event while also enjoying the live music from Brandy Carlisle and many local performers. After learning in class about the political system that leads our state and country, we are extremely interested in watching this historical. The winter sports season is going well. The current records are as follows. Girls swimming one and O, boys swimming one and O, wrestling two and eleven. Girls' basketball, one and six, boys' basketball, four and two, gymnastics, two and two. Boys' track, oh and two, girls' indoor track, two and O, girls' hockey, two and five, and boys' hockey, five, two and two.
Midterms are quickly approaching. Schedule for January twenty-fourth through twenty-seven. Students will be tested with anything from entrance exam to presentation or anything in between. I know one of my teachers one year called it the midterm experience, which didn't really do anything to placate our viewers. Um, the SHS math team has been dominant in their recent competitions, currently ghosting the first place position in that league. Congratulations to them. College results are coming out in droves with many students achieving an acceptance for college of their dreams. It's a very exciting time. An event planned for Martin Luther King Junior Day will include a performance from the select choir as well as creative contributions from SHS students on our day off. Thirteen musically talented students attended the MME A senior district at Somerset Berkeley High last weekend, spending two days practicing and performing in choir, band, and orchestra regitions. And that's all for this week.
Good question.
One thing, uh, you may be disappointed to know I didn't know a single Brandy Carlisle song, um, before, before attending her concert. I know, I'm sorry. But they've all been added to my Spotify playlist and she's my top artist. How good, I think.
I guess for Linda. Am I sure? We've been on his Spotify. Randy. What? Randy Melville, I mean.
Randy, yeah.
I'm Linda.
This is absolutely.
Microphone's off. Eighty's talking. She has a Brandy Carlisle?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, she's amazing.
Yeah.
I don't know.
Yeah.
I saw her. Brandy Carlisle. Too old.
All right. Next up, celebrate student learning at Jenkins Elementary School with Principal Oldak. Welcome.
Thank you.
And friends.
Thank you. I'm just trying to get Gigi the Penguin to sit up straight here for the presentation. Secondary school, so we bring props, um, stuffed animal props. Uh, my name is Mary Oldak. I'm the proud principal of Jenkins Elementary. I just started, uh, this past July and I'm very excited to be here tonight to celebrate how we celebrate student learning, how we celebrate student achievement, personal growth, how we recognize our staff and our community partnerships, and finally what we're looking forward to this year. Uh, we ground everything we do in the Situate Public Schools to pillars, the culture of collaboration and the culture of excellence. I'm a firm believer that without the culture of collaboration, that we cannot have the culture of excellence, that our, um, school, positive school culture and a, um, culture of trust, um, that we promote through our home away from home and you are important is the foundation of everything that we do. When our staff, student, and families feel valued and recognized, that's when we have, um, we can optimize student learning. So how does Jenkins celebrate student learning? We are thrilled to finally be able to welcome our families back into our hallways and classrooms. We share our learning with our families. This is a, um, picture of the fourth grade endangered animal showcase that was just in December. Uh, when students are presenting in the showcases, it builds their self-confidence. It builds their presentation skills and certainly the home-to-school connection. Research shows that when students and their families are involved in their learning, that there's just such a positive correlation that lasts a lifetime with their achievement, their behavior, their meaningful relationships. So it has just been wonderful to be able to open our doors and have our families back with us in our classrooms this year. We also celebrate our student learning by displaying our learning for all to see. Our hallways are just filled with colorful, uh, displays of our students' learning. And we have here, um, some examples. Up there on the top picture, we have two of our first graders are showcasing their persuasive letter writing to a zookeeper. And their assignment from their My View Unit Capstone Project was to convince the zookeeper what animal they should acquire next for, um, their zoo. You can just see the pride, um, and sense of accomplishment on their faces. So that's an example of individual, um, student learning. Down below, we have our, oh, back up to that same slide, sorry. Um, our third graders are, um, very, um, proud to be showing you their seasonal three D models of indigenous um, peoples villages in Massachusetts. Um, they're seasonal. You can see the snow there. We have springtime. We have fall and winter. Um, very complete with baby cradle boards, uh, about trees, uh, meals roasting over fires and, um, moving canoe. These are a huge hit, um, in the hallways for everyone to enjoy. And then we have our fifth graders there with their public service announcements for the essential nutrients we need to fuel our bodies, proteins, carbohydrates, and water. Um, one, we display the student work and not only celebrates their achievements for these capstone projects, but it also provides a model for the younger students, um, to see what's up and coming in the years ahead. And how do we celebrate academic achievement? Uh, we do this in a number of different ways, both individually and as classes and as a school. Um, I'm highlighting here Lexia Superstars and ST Math Journeys. Lexia Superstars and ST Math Journeys are two of our personalized, um, learning tools that we have for our students. Lexia is literacy-based, ST Math is, um, based, um, in the DESI math standards for each grade level. And when students achieve a new level or create or hit a benchmark in their math journey, we announce their name and we, uh, give them our certificate to take home. Um, I also brought Gigi the Penguin here tonight because classes can earn every month. We award, um, for Gigi the Penguins to the classes who have completed the most, uh, minutes and math puzzles in ST Math. Um, pictured here is our first graders at the end of their first unit in My View with my neighborhood. This was a capstone project, uh, for their unit and grade project about their neighborhood and, um, goods and services. And so it was a nice integration of literacy and social studies. So they created, um, their own home. You can, uh, some of those houses, you can see the children's pictures in the windows. We have Target, we have Lucky Finn, Home Depot, fire department. Um, so they made other town of Situate come, come to life in our hallway. And our outstanding first grade teachers are way in the back there, but that is our entire first grade class. I also wanted to highlight how our teachers celebrate academic achievement by analyzing student data. Uh, this is a picture, uh, from a recent staff meeting where we took the MCAS questions from math and science and analyzed where we met and exceeded expectations and where we fell short. Um, this particular group is looking at, um, the science and engineering, um, results of teacher, um, standing up, holding the flip chart there is Lisa Masterson, our fifth grade science teacher. And she is surrounded by teachers from other grade levels. And the power of this is that all of the teachers K through five are participating and really seeing the build of how these skills, um, build over the course of their time at Jenkins and all of our elementary schools and what their part is in, um, providing that background for, for the kids. And how do we celebrate personal growth? I brought with me tonight, uh, this is Ralph the Shark. We'll talk about how our students can earn Ralph the Shark or Jen the Shark is, is, um, his partner, um, through individual and class awards. We have, um, PBIS stands for Positive Intervention and Supports, and it's implemented in all of our elementary schools. We are the Jenkins Sharks. Everything we do has a shark theme. Um, we have character traits for each month. In December, the character trait was perseverance. And the character traits have been selected by our instructional leader team. And we modified them this year to be sure that we're recognizing multiple intelligences with creativity, sportsmanship, um, and not, um, just, um, character traits that are, um, as related to, uh, respectfulness and responsibility. We wanted to switch that up and, and reach deeper into what makes our kids unique. And so right there, you have a picture of the students who were recognized by their teachers for being, um, for persevering. And every student in the school will be recognized once in the school year. And we reinforce, it doesn't matter what you're recognized during the school year because your teacher's looking for that character trait, the best you best embody and, and that suits you best. Um, the girls are holding, um, Ralph the Shark there. Here he is on the table with me. And the way that the students can earn having Ralph or Jen, um, we have a K to two award and a three to five award is by earning, um, shark tickets. Sorry, Gigi. Um, shark tickets are earned by being fantastic and doing the right thing in school. They go into the classroom fishbowl. Now, when they, uh, crew ten tickets, it turns into a shark tooth. And the class with the most shark teeth by the end of the month wins, um, having this shark in their classroom. They have lots of fun. The shark, he goes to lunch, he goes to recess, he goes to specials, they read him books. And then kids, um, just love it. It's very motivating. Another way that we celebrate personal growth is through our fifth grade student ambassadors. So we take the fifth graders who were recognized for that character trait in the month. And they are our fifth grade student ambassadors for the month. And this, with this comes the extra responsibility of being role models in the school and identifying a school service project that they want to accomplish during their monthly term. So we have a picture here of our, um, student ambassadors of from the fall. And I'm not, I can't recall if this is October or maybe November. Um, they wanted to renovate the, uh, marigold and sunflower garden. They're working there at John Bill Burr for Holly Hill Farms who, um, came down and helped us out. And to them right there, uh, we see one of our fifth graders at the end of the gingerbread baby scavenger hunt that they put on for the kindergarten students. Um, they created a scavenger hunt throughout the school where the kids, um, the kindergartners were read clues that were riddles. They started out in a classroom, went to the library, read another clue that took them charging down the stairs to the cafeteria, and read another clue that sent them well, um, charging back up to the music room and all over the school where they finally discovered and found their gingerbread baby back in their classroom. That's what they're doing right there. Um, and how do we celebrate staff? Um, you know, really going back to that, that first pillar of the, um, of collaboration, we are very, very intentional about how we recognize and celebrate our staff to promote that positive school culture. Uh, this is our U R Important Board from the month of December. Um, that's, uh, this is Antonori, one of our administrative assistants, and, um, Heather Dunn, one of our first grade teachers. And they're standing in front of our U R Important Board, which was a very heartfelt, um, display and activity that we did during the month of December. Every single one of our staff members in the building has a card up on that board. And we included absolutely everybody, our custodians, our cafeteria staff, and our district staff that is also housed at Jenkins because, um, we really feel that they're part of our Jenkins family. And on that card are three anonymous compliments from a, uh, fellow staff member. And, um, they may never know who wrote what, um, the compliment that they received, but, uh, people were very touched. There were tears. Um, and it was, you know, just a really wonderful way for them to be affirmed about why they're important in our school. Um, we start our staff meetings with the Situate tradition of sale or shout-outs, um, which don't necessarily have to be work-related. And our staff knows each other very well. Many of them have been there since the school opened twenty, over twenty years ago. And our school culture calendar, this is, um, a calendar, a monthly calendar where our instructional leader team tracks the events and activities for our staff, our students, and our families, making sure that there's something for everybody um, every, every month, um, to enjoy and to, uh, build that sense of community. And how do we celebrate students? Um, we believe very strongly in educating the whole child, so you definitely, um, want to highlight how we celebrate the fine arts. I think Situate, this is one of the, the strengths of our district is they focus on the fine arts and the commitment that we have to, um, developing our children in these areas. Our December Winter Music Concert, this is our fourth and fifth grade combined course. Um, that night, we also showcased our, uh, the accomplishments in progress of our band. And during the day, they also perform for the whole student body. And the younger students were mesmerized by our chorus and by, by the band. And again, it gives them a glimpse of things to look forward to. Uh, we also have a picture here of Mrs. Woodford, who is our art teacher. And this is during the This Is Our House celebration. She selected these four artists to participate in the inspired art portion of This Is Our House. Um, and while, um, they listened to the words and music during the assembly, they were creating these paintings which reflect, um, love, inclusion, and trust. And they're now highlighted and displayed in our lobby. And how does, uh, Jenkins celebrate students? I really wanted to highlight our partnership with our community. Um, our PTO is simply, um, unbelievable. Uh, they provide a tremendous amount of fundraising and family-friendly events and enrichment activities for our students. This is from our Walk to School event back in October. And, um, our first responders are firefighters, our police officers, our friendly faces in our hallways. Uh, the kids know them by name. Many of them are, uh, family members to our Jenkins students as well. And they make sure that our, um, children have age-appropriate education to keep them safe at home and at school. And what are we looking forward to? Um, we have the expectation that all of our students will meet or exceed grade level benchmarks. That is, um, the, the focus and, uh, what we keep our eye on throughout the year. Uh, we're also very excited by the DESI grant, uh, that Situate was just awarded to, um, look at strengthening our social emotional learning resources in our elementary schools and across the grade levels. And, um, we're very excited about the PTO project to take on, um, the place structure improvements at our school. They are in the process of submitting a, an application to the Community Preservation Commission, um, to replace replaced structure, which is now twenty-one years old. It was something that is, uh, more age-appropriate, developmentally appropriate, and that is also ADA compliant. And pictured there is, um, again, a fun family event sponsored by our PTO National Family Volunteer Day back in November, where they are renovating the planters on our playground. Oh, thank you very much, um, for listening tonight. Just wanted to show you a very cute picture of our first graders welcoming our snowmen to, um, the Jenkins, um, uh, front entrance. We have seasonal signs that go up, um, and the snowmen came, um, that were mounted right before the December vacation and the children are really excited to see those. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, questions for the world. Excellent. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, uh, new business program of studies, Situate High School. Amy Arnold.
I don't think I can talk back. Yes, thank you for having me. I'm here to present the two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four program of studies for Situate High School. Um, I did share with you an executive summary last week along with the draft program of studies. Um, we have a few changes here tonight, a few changes for the program of studies. These changes have been provided, um, by the department chairs and have been reviewed by Dr. McGuire and also all the chairs. Uh, we have a couple of, um, new courses. Uh, we have a new business course called Entrepreneurship and Business Leadership Capstone Course, which lines nicely with our Business Pathways Program, which is also, um, something that we put in the program of studies this year. Um, in terms of fine arts, there's just a couple of updates to the prerequisite language for some of our courses. Um, there's a couple of changes in our history department where we updated a, uh, course called Current Topics in Human Rights. And we also updated our Advanced Placement U S Government and Politics Class, which is predominantly has, uh, traditionally been a twelfth grade only, um, course to allow next year, allow eleventh graders to take that course. We're really excited about that change, um, for our, for our students. Um, in mathematics, we have a change in the title of the Intro to Computer Programming to, um, Computer Engineering. Um, we do have a number of science changes. Um, we are replacing Advanced Placement Physics Two with Advanced Placement Physics C. Uh, we're also adding a lab block, a semester-long, um, lab block for, uh, AP Physics C, AP Chemistry, and AP Physics One. Um, Patrick, you're in our department chair for sciences here. If you have any specific questions about, um, about the, about those courses. Uh, we also added a, uh, project lead the way to the title of Principles of Biomedical Science. And we removed the Bioethics course from our program of studies. We did change the names of the environmental science classes, both CP and honors level, to Environmental Challenges and Solutions. Um, in the science, engineering, and technology, we made a few edits to the descriptions and clarified some of the prerequisites. Um, in terms of foreign language, we added the Global Citizens Pathway Program. So next, so we are piloting, piloting the, um, the business and the global citizens, um, pathways. But we're putting that in the program of studies for next year. Uh, there was updates to the SEAL by literacy award criteria. And, um, next year, we, we flip our French four and five and our Spanish four and five, uh, to the film course next year. Um, every other year, we have a film course one year and the next year we have a different, we have a different course. So next year, we're just going back to the film courses. So that's the changes. Those are the changes. Like I said, the department chairs are here. If you have specific questions about any of the, any of the programmatic changes that we're presenting.
All right. Thank you so much. Any questions?
I have a, uh, I guess it's, it's kind of asking for the question, um, for the AP Chemistry and Physic Lab or adding a block. So I'm assuming that is in direct response to potentially improving our AP test scores? Is it giving students extra time to practice their skills?
Patrick, would you like to, um? Cut out. Thank you.
Yeah, hi. Um, so this is relatively common practice in AP Lab Sciences, um, in our area as well as, um, broader than that. Um, I taught in the neighboring district before coming here and I taught AP Bio and we had a lab period assigned to it. Uh, we currently don't meet the contact hours as recommended by College Board for some of these courses, most notably chemistry. Um, so doing this allows us to, uh, not only meet but surpass those recommendations. Uh, these blocks are semesterized, so it's not going to be for a student two blocks for the entire year. It's going to be two blocks for half the year and then revert to the normal one or the other way around, depending on which course we're talking and how the schedule ends up getting built. Uh, it will also, if we're fortunate enough and conscious enough in building a schedule, to have them be back to back, actually give us the time that it takes to run some of the labs, beginning through end in one sitting. It's really hard to ask a chemical reaction to stop and come back the next day, pick up where it left off. So, um, we are hoping that we see some improvement in scores, but I think actually getting kids the exposure and the opportunity in the classroom with their teacher to, uh, have those complete experiences more a driver than just the source.
Okay. Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, can I ask you another science question? This is one I do.
I, I just had like a follow-up question. I think, um, so the students that have taken these new, the classes that require the lab block, is that now like? Having them sign up for the lab block, does that kind of interfere with them being able to take other classes that I mean, like, does that cut down a number of classes they can take? You know, you know what I'm saying?
It definitely fills one semester block in their schedule. What that impact is will really depend on the kid and their requests. Uh, for some, it may just be that they don't have a study hall that maybe they were planning right now, but for others, it also, yes, might force some sort of choice between the AP Suns class or something else. Um, in which case we'll do the best we can to counsel and advise students through that decision.
No, it sounds very exciting to, you know, that hands-on stuff. So they haven't been able, they haven't been doing that hands-on. And now they will?
We do the absolute best we can, but we are having to modify a lot of labs and activities to fit within a sixty-three minute block.
Okay, great, thanks.
Can you change from physics two to physics C? Is that a major change in the curriculum or is that just an anything?
Uh, it's fairly significant. Uh, they are completely different courses. C is very unique in that, as far as I know, it's the only AP course that actually has two AP exams attached to it. Um, Physics One and Physics Two, which we currently offer, are meant to mimic the two semesters of intro physics that a student would see at university level. The, uh, algebra-based. Physics C is now a calculus-based. Uh, and the driver here is feedback from our students, particularly students that are interested in pursuing, um, engineering programs, uh, is that their algebra-based physics that they're being exposed to isn't, again, isn't meeting their requirements in college. Um, and so we want to give kids more of a fighting chance to be able to perform well enough on that AP exam to then be able to waive an intro course presumably for freshman year in college.
So our students then can take, uh, calculus like their junior year and then their senior year take physics C? Or is it going to be like, sweet, they do it both and send down?
It's intended to be concurrent. There will possibly probably be a small number of students that do that. We, we have, and I don't want to speak for math, but I know there are six or eight or so students that. We, we have, and I don't want to speak for math, but I know there are six or eight or so students every year that are in calculus as a junior. Certainly, they could cycle to physics from there. The way we're listing it and the way the College Board intends it is, it's a co-requisite.
So the communication between math and science to make sure you're not, one's on ahead of the other in terms of, you know, content.
Exactly.
I figured it would be, I just forget that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yes. Right, acceptance of gifts. First will be.
All right, good evening. Today, we have two gifts that have been gifted to Gates Middle School. The first one is in the amount of five hundred dollars from the Cape Cod Five Foundation. The generous people at Cape Cod Five granted a mini-grant to our eighth-grade ELA team in the amount of five hundred dollars for work on a project that all students in eighth grade will do focused on unity and the theme of the novel they will read in the spring.
Take a motion on that, the first gift?
I make a motion that the school committee accept with great appreciation the gift from Cape Cod Five to the Lester J. Gates Middle School.
Second.
All in favor?
Thank you. The second gift was a pallet of Lysol cleaning wipes from the Richardson Gaffey Funeral Home. And we are very appreciative of that donation, although we have many, many wipes across the district. The people at Richardson Gaffey had even more, and they thought our schools could use, so we are very grateful for their donation.
Excellent.
I make a motion to accept with great appreciation the gift from Richardson Gaffey Funeral Home.
All in favor?
Hi.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, so subcommittee updates. So we have our, I'll see subcommittee. That will be second reading on these files.
Hello.
Hi.
Our policy subcommittee met again today. There are three policies that we're hoping that we can vote on and discuss in the last meeting. The first one is DKC Expense Reimbursement. Do you want to do one at a time?
Sure.
Okay. The biggest change is that the first sentence is saying that personnel, school department officials who incur authorized expenses can carry out their duties are reimbursed. The key that we discussed is that the expenses need to be authorized ahead of time. Is there anything else you two would like to add?
Okay. It's like, might as well just do all three and then we'll just vote them all.
Okay. The next policy is JCA, which is Assignments of Students to Schools. The change, if you remember this one, is that the, if the permission will not extend beyond the current school. Do you have questions or anything about that?
So I just want to, maybe clarification that we will allow. You know, like we had discussed the last meeting, if the family moves within the, the school district, they can stay at their previous neighborhood school through the end of that school year. So you, so I just want, but it's only go back to finish up that school year.
Exactly.
It doesn't go into the next.
And they still need to request permission because we wouldn't be able to provide transportation outside of that.
I just wanted to clarify how you said, like, it was going to end like this year.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Not forever, not forever.
Yeah, yes, it ends after the, that first year.
That child, yeah.
And then Superintendent Burke, and I think you said this in the last meeting, but the families that are impacted by this, they were fine with the change. There's been no change in that from our last meeting, yeah?
I mean, every family that I've dealt with this year, I've informed them of the policy taking effect until next year.
But there's no, I thought you said the families are fine with it in our last meeting, it's still the case. I mean, I didn't, I wasn't able to check with every family, but the families that we've dealt with so far. It's from our last meeting, there was no major.
Well, I can tell you, just like we discussed in our subcommittee meeting, there's been literally zero communication or feedback.
Okay, okay, that's reasonable. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, and the last policy is JLCD and JLCDR. It is administering of medication to students, and it's basically just the mask policy. It's revised, recommended by county, which no major changes.
Questions about that? Very straightforward. All right, so I will entertain a motion for all three of these policies.
Oh, go for it. I make a motion to vote to approve policy DKC Expense Reimbursement.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
I make a motion to that the school committee approve policy JCA Assignments of Students to Schools.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. I make a motion that the school committee vote to approve policies JLCD and JLCDR Administration of Medication. Did you just approve JLCD in the new?
Oh, okay.
Now, let's do that over. I make a motion that the school committee vote to approve policy JLCD Administration of Medication.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Right, thank you. Leadership reports. Superintendent Burke.
Hi, thank you. Good evening, everyone, and happy new year, our first meeting in the new year. I thought it would be appropriate to, what were some of the, what are going to be the big three? Some big items that will be addressing the second half of the year. A lot of work has gone into these already, most agree, along with all the work being done on a daily basis that we're hearing from our principals, department chairs, and assistant superintendent. And I'll get into a little bit detail on each and dive in deeper on one specifically tonight. So the, the big three are, are the fiscal year, twenty-four budget, which we'll be hearing a lot about come February. And number two is the heavily new school building project, which we've been speaking about a lot throughout the year. And that's why I'll do a deeper diving, as that's hitting some critical points in the pretty long process. And finally, the strategic plan, which is hugely important undertaking. And all three of these, and why I brought these to our attention is because all three of these collaborative opportunities, which not only does the school community have an opportunity to get involved, but the larger community as well. So why this matters, so I can get a little clarification on each. So the fiscal twenty-four budget, what we spend our money on reflects our values and what we value in education. Also, it, it shows our commitment to being responsible to the taxpayers of our town. And so some of our goals with the budget have been over the last three years and will continue to be transparency and responsibility in doing what's best for our students ultimately. Our administrative team will be, the next meeting, a event on that will be tomorrow with the finance subcommittee that we started a year or two back of consisting of Mr. Wong and Mr. Gates. So thank you for your time on that. That'll be our first look. We've been doing a lot of work behind the scenes, obviously, with, from the school level all the way up to administrative level. And we have a, a draft to share with you two tomorrow. That'll be our first run-through of the line-by-line address of the budget. And the first community opportunity will be February fourth with a Saturday workshop for the entire community that we'll make sure to promote with everybody. I'll go to the strategic plan next. And in a nutshell, a strategic plan is the collaborative approach with the entire community to develop a three- to five-year vision and values and goals for the district. Clearly articulate those so that everyone's on the same page and aligned in all the wars, or in the water, and going in the same direction. So that's really exciting stuff and much needed. Ours expires this year, the current one, we inherited, which has done very well. COVID obviously threw a wrinkle in that. So again, great timing for all these things to happen. We're very fortunate, I think. So we'll be meeting a central office team on January eighteenth with Teaching and Learning Alliance, which is the consultant group we have coming in, working with us to spearhead this. And that consists of all retired or current superintendents that I've done this many times, done it well, and they're respected as we research this group. Also, good to have an outside lens coming in and helping us guide us through this work. So that'll be more to come. We'll be going with community involvement in February. So a lot happening in February as we prepare. Now, I'd like to get into a deeper dive a little bit with the Addleley Project and just an update on that. So, good news is we secured a contract, which was slightly under budget, actually, with our new architect, Dora Whittier, which, if you recall, worked with, on a couple of projects on this town safety building in town. And we had a leadership kickoff with them and our honors project manager, which is Vertex, which also worked on that project with Dora Whittier, so there's familiarity there. Both were unanimous choices by the school building committee and approved by the MSBA. So we were really fortunate to get what we wanted there. At this meeting, at this kickoff meeting, it was confirmed that the school building project will be a K through five school. And that was confirmed at the conclusion of the SOI, which is the Statement of Interest. And based on the feasibility study in the master plan, which is a very comprehensive document that Sony may have worked on. I know some people in the community that worked on this. It was completed before my arrival. I've read several times, it's very well done, and that was submitted to the MSBA to make that decision. What was new in the meetings and that we brought up that was not in there was the possibility of the new school hosting early childhood wing or ability to house students in an early childhood program. And we were formed and confirmed by the MSBA that, yes, we can, and even more importantly, that that is reimbursable. Because that would be a whole other deal if it was not. So that's an option that will be talked about in the feasibility. None of this, obviously, is a done deal because we'll look at that, we'll look at renovating the new school, where it's located. All that fun stuff starts to happen now that the architects are on board. So what does this mean? It means that our focus on the new school project will be exclusively be on our educational programming right now as a community, while the architect works on other things preparing what we want and the vision of what a pre-K school might look like for our community. So we'll start to gather input from the community on this including our teachers, administrators, school committee, obviously, and then the greater community. Similar to what happened in the originally feasibility study. Now we know the project we're looking at. Next steps, the school building committee meeting on the eighteenth of January, it's a lot going on. And at that meeting, the, will be our first, like, in-depth timeline and next steps with our OPM present and our architect. And simultaneously, we're working right now with our architect and the OPM on coming up with a communications plan, also aligning that with our website, our new website, and app distribution, our weekly cable programming, school committee meetings, and any other avenue that we can insert anywhere to meet with people. Are going to be all the communication things also coincidentally, one of our goals this year is improving communication. So we're kind of excited to get that up and running. So people will have a go-to place on the website and various outlets of communication that will focus everything back to that website as our central point to learn more about the program. So that's, those are some of the things we'll be working on and we'll be coming back with in much more detail as we move on to discuss the school year. I did also want to update the committee on the District That Never Sleeps, meaning that, well, most folks were on vacation. There was work being done with our maintenance of the buildings as promised. With our commitment to budgeting that money in the district and our promise to the town and the community that we were not only maintaining buildings but improving them. So a couple of small but big things in the long run. New shades in the central office for administrative assistants who have the glaring sun coming in there. Shades of tattered, they were not looking to, they weren't really working, so their work was interrupted. The change of school colors, Mr. Gates, I thought you'd appreciate that. They look great, but they also work. So little things like that make people's lives better when they work, and the team is very much appreciative. But, but also an important thing to do. And then we're starting a phase, another phase of the locker room. The big projects to complement our amazing facilities, athletic facilities. And that's the Colby Cover Fitness Center, which many of our students use, some of our staff even use it. It didn't have a roof, so there was peeling paint and exposed sprinkler systems. It's really messed. So a new drop ceiling was put in as the first phase. A lot of criticals to Dr. Duchy envisioning the work on this. So when you get a chance, stop in. Pictures don't do it justice, but I, but I sent to the committee. The next phase, looking at February vacation, is to get a new floor put down, new rubberized, safer floor, or it's kind of like old and there's little holes in it. It's just not, it's not what our kids deserve. So that, and hopefully at the same time, we can paint it in there. It's all white, boring plain. And just that alone will really, those three things. And I know Mr. Raniere and his team do a really good job of refurbishing the, the equipment, which not every school district does. We have a refurbished plan. When you go in there now, you see all that equipment has nice leather-like coverings like you would at your own personal fitness gym. It's clean and it looks good. So those changes over February vacation, hopefully, we'll come back and be able to share with you some strong updates in that place with them brand new. And those are some examples. Over refurbification also, we'll be doing all the floors in the second rest of the building, maybe even the floors similar to this in the high school that we've promised, so that work will be getting done soon. That's the first part of my, that's the big three presentation. Any questions?
So I just, thank you for that victory. I love how you, you did that. So with respect to the strategic plan and the team that you're using, and maybe you'll speak more to this in a future meeting. I, I think I would love to hear more about who is involved, because one thing I wonder about Superintendent Burkett is, while I can appreciate that previous superintendents have tons of experience, I also wonder about thinking innovatively and into the future and making sure there are people that are facilitating and asking good questions of things that maybe we haven't thought of yet. And so just thinking about who's on the team and making sure there's some, you know, maybe you, you said having outsiders come in. I also think having people outside of education sometimes are, are valuable. So just, I'll, I'll be curious to hear more about the team.
And I'll be happy to do that. And we'll introduce the subcommittee. And I also think what I found here, just running up from the building committee, is that the collective brain power that we have in the community, so recruiting people to come to those meetings, like the architects, attorneys, and I've never been on a building committee that's had so many, even the Vertex had shared that with us. So I think those facilitators will facilitate that, and I agree that they should bring out some good questions. But I also think it's important for us and all of us, I guess, to encourage and recruit, communicate to our community members that are innovative thinkers, you know. For example, some of the questions we have would be, you know, what are our future jobs looking? What do you see in the future? Where can we start at the elementary level to prepare themselves? I completely agree, and we'll make sure to balance that with people. So, then, those.
I'd be curious what the future jobs look like five years ago compared to five years from now.
I will say, in my, in my research and just my reading, a lot of, a lot of robots that are, are taking over, and I'm not. A lot of, a lot of robots that are, are taking over and I'm not kidding. It's, it's really happening with white collar jobs. Um, I think that's the most I'm hearing from the business folks and. I think even when Dr. White and some of the research on the, uh. Innovative pathways, that's some of the stuff that we're hearing vocally and statewide is that, that concern about, you know, um. Robotics taking up a lot of the jobs and this, how we prepare kids with jobs that don't even exist yet. You know, I mean, those critical thinking skills and collaboration, all those, that's really a challenge.
We, we teach them how to make the robots.
Somebody's got to tell them what to do.
I mean, I think along with that, I was, I heard, um, Brigham and Women's was talking about, um, just health disparities. And one thing they're recognizing in their training of medical professionals is the pipeline of people of color and, you know. The minoritized groups. And so I think also not just the kinds of jobs, but who's. Ready for those jobs and making sure we're creating pipelines, starting in elementary school so that our marginalized individuals have. You know, by the time they graduate, they have all those great opportunities. So I think that's another angle to think about.
Great point. Thank you.
I just have a comment. I just want to say, uh, thank you to. Bob production and you as well and all our maintenance teams for. It's, it's impressive to be able to put down flooring like that during a school vacation week. I think that's. You know, it's pretty amazing to see that kind of work being done strategically. At key points when, you know, you're able to make it. So thank you.
Yeah, thanks. I know Bob's anxious because he's run out of time that he wants. He's got projects that will take him two years, but he wants to get them all done this year. That's good and good motivation.
Yeah, yeah, that's great. Okay. I think it just, I mean, of course. You know, your work environment does matter. You know, the, the teachers are what, you know, we know that that's the, the core, but. Certainly doesn't help to have a less environment to get that work done. And so. Um, especially even our administrative office. I'm glad that they've all been. I think they've been in there with the light shining.
The next thing I had was the, uh. Me three twenty-four. Full calendar first reading and I want to, uh, thank the committee and I know. Told me last year, so he has, and we want the calendar earlier, even if it's only, this is a partial because, uh, but it's. It's the important stuff. So I think people planning, you know, for next year already, those, once they're doing that, um, can have. Something to look at, uh, and plan for. Secondly, I'm proud of this. Um, because I think we've got some. We've got some good collaboration. It's one of our pillars. We're, um, despite maternal and mistress school, that can, you know. Commend her and the professional development teams that she's created. That's representative of administrative teachers and, and, and Miss Driscoll. Kind of collaborate on what's the best PD. So you're actually in the same room listening. Surveying the teachers and getting feedback and saying, okay, instead of top down, okay, we think this is best. No, we do this together. So that's where this kind of calendar in just, you know, give it. General, generalization here. We looked at the benefit of half-day professional development after you teach a half a day. And you gotta go and get everyone together and in that, like, you know. Get a couple hours to do that. And by the time you get together, it's, it's productive versus the whole day. Things like that. So those conversations are happening. Um, just just looking at. Into a bit more detail about the calendar and why some of those dates have changed and why, and why behind it.
Okay, thank you. Um, so I want to thank the professional development committee. Um, we needed a focus to really talk about and listen to the survey responses from teachers about their preferences. For professional development. Do they prefer the half-day? Do they prefer a full day? And the overwhelming majority, um. Basically shared that a full day is better for teachers and for kids. Um, of people commented on how even if there is. Construction during half-day, walking isn't the same. Then it's a full day, keep more focused. So what, um. If you look at the calendar that you share, um, what the proposal for the calendar is, is that the new teacher orientation. Would be on the twenty-ninth of August. Um, the first two days would be the thirtieth and the thirty-first for teachers. And those are professional development days. And then the fifth would be the day that the students return the day out. Um, there would not be half-days. There will be a full-day professional development day on November seventh. Which we're thinking of, yes, it is. It's also helpful. We were talking long-term and probably should keep it that day. It's very helpful. And then the other day for this year would be March twenty-eighth, a second full. So instead of several half-days, it will be two full days during the school year and two full days at the beginning of the year. Um, the other thing that, um, everyone recommended is that on December twenty-second. That is a regular half-day with no lunch. And for the professional development teachers would be, or everyone will be able to take in an online or independent. Next preparation for these courses or whatever they choose to, like, we did these for this PD. Um, to give people flexibility. And right now we have tons of teachers on their own going above and beyond for their own PD. There's a way like to come for some. Um, and if you look on the all the way to June. Um, a hundred eighty days would be June fourteenth and shopping and, um, a hundred eighty. Hundred eighty-five days would be, um, June twenty. That's, that's the big thing. So the shift is instead of saying, hey, let's create all this time without teaching and then filming. We want to make sure that we say, hey, here are our needs and let's target a specific group. So we need that professional development. And make the best moves about.
Just wanted to add a couple of things to me, and totally. Well, parents and kids in the district, just what we've been hearing, the teachers and the parents is that. Uh, those half-days are tough, transportation or daycare or, you know, picking kids up, we're getting kids rides. So having, having a predetermined day and advance a full day off. Um, you can see the backup to some of the weekends for vacations, things like that. So these were conscious decisions to. Uh, make things a little more convenient for parents as well. Especially our students with water.
I have, um, one question. First of all, I think this is great, but I. Obviously, having that, um, Labor Day on that day just kind of makes, I think, everyone's job a little bit easier, right? It's not the seventh or the sixth, it's the fourth. So helps us to some degree, but. I agree. I think that, um, it's obvious that we took into account a lot of stakeholders in doing this. Have one question though, the Veterans Day. It shows as a Saturday being observed. So there's no Friday Veterans Day observation.
It, no. So I, it's, it's interesting. So we triple-checked this. Um. Veterans Day is the only day that is observed only on the day.
So that helps the calendar as well. Cause it could involve us day off. Yeah.
By one day.
I never knew that. No, I, the reason I actually saw was because the, the seventh, it looks like it's a PD day and then I thought we were going to have that Friday off as well. So that would be like a funky week. But if we don't have to, if we're not observing on the Friday, then that's. Yeah. So no, it's great. Thank you.
So is this something that we're going to, um, publish out to the community now, so that it can be shared or really sharing it as part of this meeting? Obviously, it's in a draft form. It's not.
I think that's a purview of the committee. You guys ultimately have to vote this. So it's a draft form. So I'll get guidance from the committee if they want the draft posted. That's fine. I don't even want to wait to vote on it. I think in the past, we have shown the draft up there, but I think if we're going to wait like two months to vote this. I just want to make sure that if we're taking the time to show this in January, then instead of someone going in and listening to or recording, we can actually see it.
But I think if Bill puts out his review of the school preview meeting and maybe with that one, if you do a net check or whatever you do, you could add this as a draft. Maybe, if that's your reason.
Asks are Wednesday, Thursday, plus last day.
Yeah.
And I, I did also hear, you know, feedback about that, uh, this year, just. Take the way of December break, about like having that half-day on that Friday.
But yeah, I was.
Full day. We have the full day.
Yeah, that was, uh. I give it all credit that we retired that day. I think I should be one of our fifth grade students, Finn, Mr. Finn, uh, wrote me a letter. Played into some of the decision-making that, uh, but he made a great point and I'll have to go back and tell him that this is more than. He had an impact on next year's Friday.
Feels cleaner than, than the past. I, I do think a lot of it has to do with the, the PD bold as obviously. And then, then I do think. Just Labor Day falling fairly early makes it a little bit easier too. I think the PD has a huge impact, the way that you have scheduled before that day. Um, that, and this is a silly question, but it does not impact the late start at the high school. It's not.
So like this, this year's calendar has all the. Like the week of finals, I mean, our midterms for the high school, like they have the half-days. So things like that would be added later.
Right now we haven't, we do not have that.
Because of, we don't call it.
Well, because we don't need them.
No, like this year for the high school, they have for the midterm song that those have, but then only affect the high school.
Yes. The reason why those were on the table this year is because we also had a half-day built in districts. Right? So like January, um.
It is. It's like, it's high school, high school.
Yes, yes. So now, what is, you know, be like it was the year before when the high school distances or the exams.
If they're not going to have days, they just.
But it is not professional.
Okay. So, so both those days like those aren't being addressed. Yeah.
Did you, did we triple-check the number a hundred eighty days? I would, I've never counted it and I feel bad because if, I mean, if, if it's wrong, it's our fault, right? I've never accounted.
Yes, eliminating eight to ten half-days, it's usually increases our time on the.
And I think maybe you have this debating stuff before actually Labor Day and certainly we did last year, it's about fifty-fifty. So. Works out nicely with an early Labor Day and also some of this greater thinking that's. It's work. Example, we only have two days with the staff. We had three before. One day too much because now they can use these days strategically throughout school year to target. Professional development on how, how are things going? For example, middle years to have everything front-loaded when you have middle term.
We are moving towards.
Um, so I just have a couple of dates on our interview committees. I want to give a shout out to the people who spent a lot of time reading. A lot of applications and sending through lots of interviews. Um, so we currently have, um, wrapped up the assistant director of facilities interviews. Um, when it is official, um, the human needs name will be announced to the community. Um, but I want to thank, um, Bob Dutch, Janice, Bonnie Donahue, Kevin Kelly, David Raffel. Bill Webb, Scott Lydgen, Cindy C. Saw and Andrea Cockburn for being members of that committee. Um, they put in the time, they did an awesome job. Um, right now we have, um, two finalists who are moving forward, um, to the last round of interviews for the. Food service director position. Um, right. I'd like to thank the people who participated on, um, that committee as well. Um, Bonnie Donahue, Ronnie Yee, Janice. Um, Shane Perry from Jenkins, Shannon U. Cannon, I'm here from Cushing, Courtney DeLacy. Um, and Janice Nelson, um, who's, uh, member of the food services. Um, and as of this Wednesday, we have an interview for our one licensed candidate, the director of business and finance. Um, we are, our goal is to decide if this candidate is highly qualified or need to be posted next year. Um, and I want to thank people who will be spending their time. Um, Nicole Rayne, Peter Gates, Nancy Holter, Colin Cowton. Um, Bonnie Donahue, Cindy C. Saw and Andrea Cock. Uh, I wanted to give a shout out to, um. Uh, the. Situate, uh, wrestling team. Um, I had the pleasure for the first time of having one of my children's athletic events. Be at the same time as the situat. So it was really, don't worry, we didn't, he did not compete against anybody in there. So. Um, but I was at the, the Marshfield, uh, holiday wrestling tournament. And I, I want to give a shout out to the junior captain, David Murphy, who came in fifth place. And I recognized him because he was also one of the VFW speech contestants from Nancy Holt's classroom. So it was, it was just really great. I got to talk to a lot of parents and one of the parents referred to our head coach, Kevin King, as a situat treasure. It was like, that is kind of crazy. Um, and there's another shout out that I'd like to give to a student who's a freshman. Her name is Sarah McLaughlin and, um, her dad shared with me, I'm going to give you all a copy on paper. Um, an article from the Globe that came out in July of this year and I had never seen it. Um, July is a, you know, time. Not necessarily reading the Globe. And she is someone who in eighth grade was a situat All-American athlete. A national, um, uh, winner for, um, wrestling and she was just a superstar. So I wanted to make sure. We all know and we, uh, we keep a lookout, uh, but, uh, the, the other, um. The other wrestler who placed was EJ Moskowitz, the senior captain, um, and they did awesome and I was happy to see them and, um. They were so nice to my son. So I'll give those two a hand. Um, if you haven't heard, I think Bill may have updated you that we got a grant for a math. Acceleration academy for students for grades three through five. So that's a little over forty-eight thousand dollars. It is for in-person instruction. Um, it's for twenty hours of math instruction with small class sizes, ten or fewer. And, uh, we're posting for that this week. So we hope, um, parents will be on the lookout and teachers who'd like to apply to teach math. Um, and the last update that I have is from the high school mass insight and AP team. Um, if you don't know, uh, mass insight, uh, is a company that coaches us and partners with us to make sure that we're addressing. Um, uh, expanding, increasing achievement and advanced placement. So the high school, Vince L. Wire, Karen Hughes, Kate Harwood. Patrick, Teddy Rundle and Liz Grundle. I'm going to give you a couple of highlights. Um. The, there were seven teachers, speaking language, chemistry, environmental science and statistics. They attended a week-long summer institute. That was all free with our membership. I'm going to put some additional details in the school committee update, um, just some of the statistics. But it's very important, um, that any parent who's interested in finding more about the AP program, who are. Parent coffee hour with the high school, which will be at eight AM on February third. Um, another, one more thing, um, if you have not heard of AP potential. It's students who get identified through the PSATs, um, to be targeted to promote, um, that they take advanced placement courses. So, um, one hundred seventy-three of the three hundred and nine students who took the PSATs were identified as having, um, AP potential. Seventy-three of them are not on that track in any sort of way. So right now, guidelines and teachers are. Needing and encouraging those seventy-three students to get each, um, with more rigorous for short. And that's. needing and encouraging those seventy-three students to get engaged um, with more rigorous coursework. And that's.
Thank you. The Math Academy, is that something that will be after school?
It's for the week of February vacation, Tuesday through Friday.
Oh. In the math inside, my daughter was, I came home and she was on the computer partaking in some thing. I said, oh, what's that? She goes, oh, it's that math inside thing. I'm like. So she's very.
All right, thank you so much. Dr. Dutch.
Good evening. Um, so you have in your packet the existing facility rental fee schedule. And the proposed changes are highlighted at the bottom of, of that form. Um, just to kind of draw attention to what the changes are. It is primarily the hourly rate for specific staff. And the reason for that is, are the negotiated changes that came about for our staff, both from an hourly perspective, but also um, for them to do work on weekends, particularly on a Sunday, when they'd be paid uh, time and a half or double time on Sunday. Um, the current fee schedule does not cover the hourly rate for our staff at, at those um, time and a half or double time. So we're proposing making the changes that you see highlighted and in bold to the hourly rates for custodial staff, kitchen staff, and technology staff. Uh, I would be looking for a vote at the next school committee meeting. So if you have uh, questions, either now or uh, before the next meeting, please reach out, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that you would have. Okay?
Okay, thank you. Any questions?
I might have missed it, Bob, but uh, crossing out of the no minimum.
Yeah, there, there will no longer be no minimum for Class One and Class Two. If you look at custodial, kitchen, and technology, you'll see a, a zero backslash forty dollars per hour, and then fifty dollars per hour. So zero will no longer be an option. So anybody who rents our facility, who, who we would require a custodian will have to pay the custodial fee unless it's uh, happening during school hours when we would have a custodian there anyway.
I have a question. When it says Class One, Two, and Three will be charged only when the event falls outside of the regular workday. Is there, what is the regular workday defined as?
Um, between the time they come in in the morning, um, I think at six thirty uh, till nine PM.
Okay.
So if they're not, if they're gonna be in the building beyond nine PM, then we would charge them for the time beyond nine PM. Any other questions?
We're not voting on this.
Not tonight. Um, we wanted to give you a chance to see it, think it through, and then vote uh, in two weeks.
All right, great. Yep.
Okay, thanks.
Uh, Dr. Dutch, I have one quick question for you. So for Classes Four and Five, are we seeing a lot of interest for, from inside groups for using the Performing Arts Center?
Could you repeat that? I'm sorry.
So for Classes Four and Five, are we seeing a lot of requests coming in for groups to use um, our facilities or?
Um, the Performing Arts Center in particular, um, we're seeing groups um, to do dance recitals and plays and, and that sort of thing. And some of them are, are private, uh, for-profit groups.
I got, I have a couple of groups that have said that, you know, they've looked elsewhere, so I wasn't sure if we were starting to see more groups come in now that Performing Arts Center has been open for a while, or if it's, you know, still like the same number year over year.
Um, it's pretty consistent. I mean, it's, there was a downturn, obviously, during uh, pandemic. And we've, we've seen it increase since then. Um, but I would expect that, that as we move forward, uh, you'll see even, even larger increases. Um, but the reality is, one of the limiting factors is that our, our own students, our school programs are using those spaces as well. So it's not always available when somebody wants to use it, which is one of the challenges.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
Great, and it's tonight for approval. Here, Dr. Dutch has two warrants for us.
Okay. Uh, the first warrant is warrant S two, two, one, two, one, five. Total of two hundred and twenty thousand, two hundred and sixty dollars and nine cents out of our revolving account. Uh, the, the larger items, the IDEA grant, which is a special ed grant, thirty-eight thousand, one hundred and fourteen dollars and forty-seven cents out of the hatherly feasibility capital um, revolving account. Seven thousand, two hundred and forty-four dollars and seventy-five cents to Vertex, our OPM. Out of the Esser Grant, ten thousand, fifty-seven dollars for the flying classroom, which is a STEM program for students. Out of the Gates Student Activities Account, thirteen thousand, two hundred and seventy-eight dollars and eighty-nine cents for field trip transportation, uh, drama, uh, and drama. For SHS Student Activities, sixteen thousand, eight hundred and twenty-four dollars and fifty-six cents for Model UN uh, hotel expenses to, in Boston, and the DECA trip. Out of our local uh, education accounts, athletic supplies, fifteen thousand, five hundred and seventy-two dollars and eleven cents for fall and winter supplies and uniforms. Out of private school tuition, fifty-two thousand, nine hundred and twenty-six dollars and sixteen cents. Gas utilities, twenty-one thousand, four dollars and fifty-three cents. Uh, and those are the only large uh, items on that particular warrant. Any questions about that one?
No questions here.
Okay, I'll move on to the next. Which is S two, three, zero, one, zero, three, a total of two hundred and twenty-three thousand, five hundred and sixty-nine dollars and ninety-seven cents. Again, out of the IDEA Grant, twenty-three thousand, nine hundred and seventy dollars and fifty-six cents for special education transportation. Uh, out of a capital account for flooring, twenty-six thousand, two hundred and ninety-three dollars and forty-nine cents. Out of Situate High School Student Activities, thirty thousand dollars for uh, the French trip airline tickets and Model UN uh, tickets, uh, flight tickets to Washington DC. Out of our uh, local account, private school tuition, fifteen thousand, five hundred and twenty-nine dollars and twenty-eight cents. Um, building admin, uh, new equipment, sixty thousand, three hundred and seventy-eight dollars for Situate High School uh, camera work carried over. Um, top year contract service, seventeen thousand, six hundred and sixty-five dollars and eighty-two cents. And then custodial supplies and contracted services, thirteen thousand, three hundred and eighty-three dollars and fifteen cents for paper towels, tracks, trash bags, and soap. And those are all of the large expenditures through the uh, local accounts as well. Questions?
I, Bill, I have a question. Um, and only because this is the first time I've seen it on a warrant, but the plane tickets.
Yeah, what's, what's happened is we've changed the process for paying for and um, tracking student activity expenditures. The student activity accounts belong specifically to those student groups. Um, and were always processed directly through Town Hall. And nobody in the business office ever saw them. They went directly to Town Hall. And they were beginning to have questions about these larger expenditures and really wanted somebody else to take a look who had a um, a closer tie to the schools. So we've, we've now started that process through the business office. Um, so it, it goes through the student activity. Um, both through the, the principal at the high school and her secretary. And then Cindy and I uh, sign off on it to make sure the funds were collected, the funds are there. Um, and that there's an appropriate accounting for all the revenue, the, the money that came in and the expense that we're, we're sending out. So that's why you're seeing it now, and it's becoming, it's now being part of the warrant, whereas it never was before.
Right, no, that makes perfect sense that a school activity is, goes through the school budget.
Yeah, we're just, you know, we, we get audited every year, and we want to make sure that um, we're doing everything the way that we're supposed to, and this just kind of tightens things up a little bit from a um, an accounting and even a transparency perspective for, for us and for the committee.
Great, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Um, correspondences, uh, just wanted to mention, and I realized, Peter, for forwarding this on about the mask, Board of Directors voting to you, and please support the pursuit of the changes in the circuit breaker reimbursements for the special education expense, though. I don't know, I just think it's important, and super work, intended work, that it moved it to, like, it's just important for us to advocate and write to our representatives, because um, that is a huge portion of funding. Really important, so I encourage us all to send some emails and get in touch with those folks. All I have for correspondences, note anybody else's anything or any other business. Second. Anything you want to add or to say.
There, there, um, Bill, have you heard, has there been any discussion on that um, for the fourteen percent increase on special ed, out of different placements? I know that came out a couple of weeks ago. And I think that you would start an initiative, the contact record, and any further info on that?
Uh, no, the last time I met with, I was in the Nordestian Finances, and they there had a person thought that it was a done deal. So although we, you know, we have to a new governor, so it's potential, that's I think why MASC, MESS, the Association of Superintendents, is also continuing to um, reach out. Because if you recall that, and for those folks listening, the, our district special education um, costs um, were projected each year typically goes up around, last decade, it's averaged about two percent. So we can budget that, applying to what we usually increase by two, three percent. This year it's got fourteen percent, which reflects approximately, much as four hundred thousand dollars for central public schools. Uh, it makes plenty away from other things, although, you know, money's important. One of the recommendations was, okay, how come we don't have money to support those, those students in schools? At the same time, not doing such a egregious way, where you're just hammering folks in one year, and one of those was the reimbursement from seventy-five percent to ninety percent. Who will, who will know, will survive one year, but will get the majority of that money back, so that uh, folks have a wipeout on their budgets.
Makes sense.
And if I hear anything, I'll be absolutely sure of it.
Thanks. Okay, um, any future agenda items, any of note, like to mention now, not, you know, uh, next meeting, January thirtieth? Want to anything? Uh, if there is nothing else, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So.
On favor?
Aye.